Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, August 13th, 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us and participate in council meetings. For those of you who aren't able to join us, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. It is now 10:15 a.m. We have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Tuesday, as it is the first meeting of the week, we do have the tradition of both a flag salute, as well as a moment of inspiration. To lead us in the pledge of allegiance, we have special guests here from the 15th Council District. I'd like to introduce Michael and Jenny Worth. If you could come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Members of the council, members of the public, please rise.
Please place your hand on your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to lead us in our moment of inspiration. On behalf of Councilmember Han, I want to welcome Bishop Joseph Sartoris, who was born in the city of Los Angeles, so it's native Angelino, ordained as a priest in 1953. So he'll be soon celebrating his 50th anniversary in the ministry for the people of Los Angeles. His ministry has extended to practically every corner of the city, but most especially for the people of the San Pedro Pastoral region, where he has served as bishop for eight years. Bishop Sartoris, if we can ask you to come to the podium and lead us in the moment of inspiration.
I might add that I was born in the French hospital. My father had a market on North Broadway at 9:33, so Los Angeles is very dear to our hearts. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share a moment of inspiration. In the face of so much uncertainty and people's fears, I thought it might be good to begin just a short passage from the Sermon on the Mount. Therefore I tell you, do not worry about your life, what you eat or drink, about your body, what you will wear. Is not life more than food, and the body more than clothing? Look at the birds of the sky. They do not sow or reap, they gather nothing into barns, yet your heavenly Father feeds them. Are you not more important than they? Can any of you by worrying at a single moment to your lifespan? Are you anxious about clothes? Learn from the way the wildflowers grow. They do not work or spin. But I tell you, that not even Solomon and all his splendor was clothed like one of them. If God so clothes the grass of the field which grows today and is thrown into the oven tomorrow, will he not much more provide for you, oh Yolivofe? So do not worry and say, what are we to eat, or what are we to drink, or what are we to wear? All these things the pagans seek. Your heavenly Father knows, your heavenly Father knows, that you need them all. But seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these things will be given you beside. Do not worry about tomorrow, tomorrow will take care of itself. Sufficiency for a day is its own evil. And so, Father, keep us calm in your peace, give us a restful heart that relies on your word, your promises, your love. We know that we must work as your servants, securing justice, pursuing righteousness, and following the path of truth. Keep us conscious of your grace, and secure in the knowledge that it's your instruments in building a world free from violence, hatred, injustice. Your hand supports us, and your grace sustains us. Fill us with hope, that even in the darkest moments, we're never alone. You're always there to give us strength and courage. And in the spirit of our reading today, let us wisely seek first your kingdom, your righteousness, knowing that all things will be given us beside. So with Thanksgiving for this day and all the gifts each day brings, we make our prayer with faith and trust in your goodness and mercy through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Members of the council, we also have one presentation scheduled for today. I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my privilege to recognize the Nise Week Queen and her court for this year. It's one of the more positive aspects of my job, because they're such inspiring women year after year. These young women are selected every year as part of the two-week celebration of culture and family for the Little Tokyo or Japanese-American community. This year's court is comprised of some extremely talented, intelligent, and vibrant young women who truly represent the spirit of the Nise Festival. And I would like to introduce each one of these women to you and present them with a certificate of recognition. First, we have our 2002 Nise Week Queen, Jamie Hisa Mizuhara. First Princess Kimberly Yone Hayashi. Ms. Tomodachi Lisa Tomoko Shimbashi. Princess Lauren Miyuki Kozai. Princess Dawn Kiko Mizuhara. Princess Sonia Atsuko Taten. Princess Dawn Naomi Yoshioka. And I would also like to recognize some people who work on Nise Week year after year after year on a volunteer basis. They never seek any recognition, but they're here today, and I would like to recognize them. First of all, somebody we all know, James Okazaki, who is the voluntary parade chairman, and he works very hard to make sure that everybody is comfortable and in the right car, and that everything flows. And then Frances Hashimoto, Quaker hand. She's the executive board member of the Nise Week Festival. And then Karen Uchizono, who is queen chair of the Nise Week Festival. And I'd like to ask our Nise Week Queen for 2002 to just come up here and just say a few words of greeting for all of us.
Thank you, Jan Perry, and to Honorable Alex Padilla and the rest of the council members. We want, on behalf of the 2002 Nise Week Court, we'd like to thank you for welcoming us here today. And also, thank you for your continued support for Nise Week, and your dedication and commitment to the Japanese-American and Japanese community, and your dedication to restoring and revitalizing Little Tokyo. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Congratulations to the courts. I believe there will be escort to the press room for some pictures and presentations in the rear of chambers. Members of the council, members of the public, we have now achieved a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Birson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labanche, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, with the Thomas Weiss, Sign Padilla, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Holden moves, and Mr. Redd seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Birson seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several commissioners to confirm. Item number five is confirmation of Eleanor Montano to the Harbor Area Planning Commission, and that is a planning and use management committee report.
Okay, if Miss Montano can come forward at this time. Now would you like to come forward, just in case members of the council have any questions? Consideration, Miss Montano has been held in committee, and a report has been distributed. Are there members of the council wishing to ask any further questions or make further Seeing none, Miss Montano gets they're going to go easy on you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving the city. Fourth with an item number five, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 19 is confirmation of Kimberly Marto to the Board of Zoo Commissioners, and this has not gone through the committee process. Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee waived consideration.
Okay, well, I do not have requests, members of the public, to address the council on the confirmation of this nominee. Members of the council wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Weiss.
As Chair, hello? Here we are. Thank you very much. As Chair of the committee, I want to formally move approval of the nomination of Ms. Marto, and I want to wish you all the best. You're really, you're going to do a tremendous service to this city, because you go to the zoo at a time when we really need people who can sort of bridge a gap, a gap between those committed individuals who spend so much time and energy helping to fundraise for the zoo, and between those people who are professionals in their field, scientific professionals, who are experts at managing the zoo on a daily, daily basis. And you have unique qualifications, you have a unique background, you have an extraordinary record of public service, and the city of L.A. is lucky to have you, and we're very lucky that you're going to do this for the next couple of years. So I wish you all the best. I want to offer you my support and my help, and the help of my committee, and thank you very much for joining us, Ms. Marto.
Mr. Labanche.
Soon to be Commissioner Marto, I want to thank you for your service to Los Angeles in this very important commission that serves so many people, not just from Los Angeles, but throughout the region, to enjoy the Los Angeles Zoo and the great job the staff at the zoo has done. Now you're going to be the true overseer as a member of the Board of Commissioners. But what makes you so special, members of council, and Mr. Weiss, as you spoke eloquently moments ago, Kimberly has the greatest qualifications of any zoo commissioner. She grew up in the neighborhood, she graduated from John Marshall High. So thank you, Kimberly, right on.
Ms. Grul.
Well, if she graduated from John Marshall High, okay, I might not have to vote for her now, okay. But Kimberly, so pleased that you are going to become, again, part of the city family as one of our commissioners on the zoo, and I know that it's such a wonderful treasure for our city, and that all of us around this horse sheen think it's critically important, and know that you can come to us if there are issues and problems, and even on the good things about the happening at the zoo, because we want the public to know that our zoo is one of the best zoos in the country. I had the pleasure of being laze onto the zoo when I worked for Mayor Bradley, and I think sometimes it's a hidden treasure, and we don't want it to any longer be a hidden treasure. So I look forward to working with you and compliment you for your willingness to participate in this process, and you bring some, some strong skills, not only hopefully in raising more money for our zoo, but about the important issues that face our zoo as well. So congratulations, and I am sure you'll get unanimous support today. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Hey, Mr. President, colleagues. I know that you have your personal photographer with you. Not Mr. Labanche. Mr. Emerson, who, you can come take photos, it's okay. Because I don't, I wouldn't trust Labanche taking photos. Congratulations. I know that you're a fan of the zoo. I know you'll bring that energy and enthusiasm to make it what we want it to be. I know there's going to be a new zoo director, permanent director, so it'll be a very exciting time. There's many renovations taking place at the zoo, and San Diego seems to get a lot of accolades for their zoo, and I think sometimes ours stands in the shadow. And I know with your energy and enthusiasm, we'll get out there in front with it. It's a wonderful facility, wonderful dedicated people there, wonderful display of animals, and I welcome you onboard, and I know you'll do a wonderful job as you venture into that excitement of the Los Angeles Zoo.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, oh, by the way, are you glad to be back home? The weather hot back there and cold and humid. You know, this is one family that's been giving up their time and services for many years. John Emerson left a very successful law practice and came to work for the city of Los Angeles in City Attorney's Office, giving once again. And then, after a period of time, he went back to Washington, D.C. for a number of years, working for the President of the United States, and you were there giving him support and doing your part as well. It's a wonderful experience, but it's, again, a sign of giving back to the community, not just here locally, but around the United States as well. And you know, John, every time I knew I needed to see the President, if you're on that plane, you're on it many times, I had access. In fact, I did go and get on the plane once, I want you to hold, for the President usually sleeves his head and so on, and I'll tell you the story one day. In any case, John, we're going to vote, I'm going to vote for your wife here, she's, once again, wants to give her her time and services, and you just finished drawing the boundary lines for us for the redistricting program. I didn't always, I don't like my, my lines of 100%, but that's all, I won't hold that against you, you did your best. You're one vote, but you made resounding. In any case, we're going to congratulate you for a job we know you're going to do very well, and good luck, and we'll be with you if you have any questions that ever need to be answered, call upon us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation of Ms. Marto. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving the city. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number twenty is confirmation of Cheryl K. Peterson to the Board of Airport Commissioners, and this has been waived by Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee.
Ms. Peterson with us? As she comes forward, members, I do not have requests for members of the public to speak on this item, so we shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish you continued success on the commission, Ms. Peterson. We've had a nice opportunity to get to know each other and talk about issues. You bring a background in finance, which is so critically needed there, because the issues are so complex and they're so long-term. I mean, we're talking about the next generation, and it's clear to me that you are extraordinarily dedicated to the cause, you're in it for all the right reasons, and, and I wish you all the best in your next several years of service on the airport commission. So congratulations to you.
Ms. Mysakowski.
To rise, to support this nomination, I think it was waived out of Commerce and Energy and Natural Resources Committee because there was a recognition that Ms. Peterson has served for a number of years on the airport, very, very thoughtfully, very, very studiously, as Mr. Weiss indicated, from a different perspective perhaps than others, and a perspective that's very much needed, particularly as we are embarking on a way to not only bring this airport into the 21st century, but bring it in into the recognition of what is now a part of us with the security concerns that are literally front and center. So I look for unanimous vote as well on this appointment, and congratulate Ms. Peterson for her service already providing and yet to come.
Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, thank you, colleagues. Regarding the commission and the airport, we always hear about Los Angeles International Airport and the needs and concerns there, and there's another airport in the San Fernando Valley that sometimes gets pushed aside. There's some plans to do some renovation out there, some plans to have some permanent facilities for the fixed wing, the props versus the jets, and I would just encourage to pay close attention to that because the folks of the valley are very concerned and committed to that issue of the airport and the expansion and the National Guard facility that sits vacant and what may happen to that in the near future. So I just encourage you to keep a very close eye on the Van Nuys Airport, as well as all of the activities that are taking place at Los Angeles International. Please do that. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Peterson, how are you? How long have you been on the commission?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
How long have you been on that commission?
Since September 2000.
2000. Well, before you were appointed, the airport commissioners, which is supportive of the council, and I voted no, spent hundreds of millions of dollars to acquire some property, buy the homes in that general area, and without an environmental impact report or study that was not finished. I says, why are you doing this unless you intend to expand the size of the airport? And so, no, we're just acquiring the land. Now, the rest is history. When the mayor got elected, no airport expansion. We're going to be neighbor-friendly. Now, my question is, is the position still the same? Or we're going to be neighbor-friendly? Are we going to expand the airport? And don't say we're going to do it, in spite of what the people are saying who live in that general area, the noise, et cetera, et cetera. And then, the other thing, airport safety. We talk about the perimeter, you know, I spoke before the commission, you guys receive me very well, and Jerry Epstein, who's a former president of the commission, he really cares about the commission, he really loves what they're doing there, but he wants airport safety. We want the people to believe that, to know that when they go into the airport, they get on that plane, they get off, they're going to be in a safe environment. So what are we doing about safety? Do you feel better about the federal government taking over the security aspect of the airport as compared to where it was before? So that's three questions. Safety in general, federal government taking over the airport security, and the expansion of the airport. Could you respond to that, and then I'll close with a statement.
Well, you know, I think it's, it's the intention of every one of the commissioners, including myself, to be a good neighbor to, to each of the communities in, in which we have airports, LAX, Van Nuys, and Ontario and Palmdale. So I think that's a very important and continuing priority for us. You know, in, in, in terms of security, I, I think our number-one focus since September 11th has been on security and improving security, and you know, literally every time we have a commission meeting, we, we talk about improving the security of the airport because we all realize how, how important that asset is to our community.
Anyway, with the federal government there, I think it's a little tighter than where it was before, I'll answer that one. But in terms of security, right now, the fence is not a security fence. I don't want to talk about the loopholes of the problem that exist there, but I hope and expect that you would do, put a perimeter fence around there that will be safe and secure. I'm sure you're going to work on that.
Believe me, we share your concern and we're.
You're going to work on that. Now, in terms of the friendly expansion of the airport, the question is, do you intend to expand the airport or not expand the airport? That is the question, whether or not we're going to make it look better, you know, I don't want, see.
Well, you know, I, I think the airport has said he's going to cap LAX at 78 million passengers a year, and I certainly support his position on that.
What was that again, talking to the mic, remember, I didn't hear you?
The mayor has said that he's going to cap LAX at 78 million passengers a year and, and work to increase travel through the other airports in our region, and I think that's certainly the right thing to do.
He's going to cap it at 70 million passengers?
Seventy-eight, I think.
Seventy-eight million? Okay. Now, just let me just tell you, and I'm going to close, and sit down, Mr. President, that the federal government determines what the cargo is going to be like at these various airports, international airports. In terms of personnel, they plan for the future. They don't plan for today, maybe today is 78 million, or the next four years is 78 million, but somewhere along the line, we're going to be, it's going to be one global, one country, one world, and you're going to find that they're going to need to expand it. Maybe I always took that position later on, where you change a generation, people come and go, new ideas, new philosophies, and you got to accommodate a vast number of people coming into the airport. So I agree with that, I don't know, but that's in your hand, it's your responsibility, not mine, and good, good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Labanche.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Ms. Peterson, thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles on the airport commission, and the ability to listen to the community and so forth throughout the region, whether it's our own Los Angeles International Airport and our neighbors in Agawood or in El Segundo, our own residents in Westchester, and in the Van Nuys Airport situation. I was out there yesterday, we had a great bike luncheon out there, and the folks there are very concerned to make sure there's a proper balance in the importance of the airport. But I just want to echo what I feel so strongly about is safety, for the traveling public, safety for those in airplanes, safety in the modernization of the airport, to make the airport a place that people could safely arrive in their aircraft and then move through the terminals and whatever situation you have to decide. I do know strongly, though, every citizen I've ever met in Los Angeles is very adamant that the green line should somehow get to the airport, so I'd just like to see committed to that, and I'll be happy. Thank you for your service, Ms. Peterson.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes, I too would like to thank you for your service, but I'd also like to make a couple of comments that I'm sure you're probably aware of, but I think that everybody should be aware of. As you know, with the dropout of El Toro from the regional picture, we need to find in the next 20 years 33 million passengers availability in order to accommodate the needs of our region. One of the things that I hope that you're going to be seriously looking at, as well as the expansion of Ontario, would be the bringing to fruition of Palmdale and any other resources that we may have to have. Otherwise, we will have chaos, and I'm sure you're aware of it, and I just want to wish you luck. I know you've got a tough assignment ahead of you, but I'm sure that you're doing everything, and the board, the city will be doing everything in law to try to meet this challenge. It is imperative, and I want all the council members to be aware of this, it is imperative that we develop Palmdale Airport and the ability to get there through building of Beltway-type roads such as they have in Washington, D.C., which take you from the airport to, to D.C. In this case, they would take you from the airport to the five freeway free if you're using the airport. It can be paid off by the people who are struggling on the 14, who would pay to use it. So I think that we all ought to be aware of this, and we all ought to start looking in that direction. You've got a tough job ahead of you, and I wish you luck.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Again, thank you for your services, and I'd rather just put it all on the table, we're all hitting different parts that are important, issues that are important to us. For me, it's how we treat employees. Airport is an incredible venue where tenants, businesses come and take advantage of, and rightfully so, the commerce that exists when you have such a place where trade can occur. But how we treat our employees, how we treat our people, these are also Los Angeles residents, citizens, and at all levels, we should have a higher priority, not only for the big wallet and the deals, but also for those who are workers and employees, service providers. We are one city, and we should be treating them all equally, and we're of the same type of just manner that anyone would expect, so I, hopefully, we can depend on you to have that kind of life. Thank you very much.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I believe we're prepared for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, Ms. Peterson, thank you for serving the city. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 21 is confirmation of Mr. Thomas H. Warren to the Board of Harbor Commissioners, and Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee waived that item also.
Okay, and once again, I do not have requests, members of the public, to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item 21? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. Mr. Holden.
With the Harbor Commission, right?
Need to be ready next time, Mr. Holden.
We, you know, we have some problems down there. Talking about a strike, maybe? Negotiation? Could you tell us something about the status of negotiation and what it looks like and, and you know, what's likely to happen, if anything at all?
I'd be happy to.
That's, I think that's an important question.
I'm with the International Longshore and Warehouse Union 35 years, past president of ILW Local 63 Marine Clerks, and have sat on the coast negotiating committee several times. I'm not this year because of my commitments to the Harbor Commission, but, Mr. Holden, what we're, we're back in negotiations as of this morning, probably about this time. There's been a two-week recess because we have been in negotiations since early May, and there was a break for both sides to go ahead and have a little time off, to relook at all the issues, and this morning in, in San Francisco, we hope to start moving the agenda more towards the middle. There's been major issues. The two big ones have been our health and welfare benefits, which we enjoy greatly, and the other one has been the technology. The, the technology of the world has changed. We're not, a lot of the Marine Clerks work, the work that I do, can be done in computer, it can be done away from the waterfront. We're looking, the employers are looking at moving several of our jobs off dock to outsource them. This has never been possible up until the computer, computer era, because the waterfront's been here, we've been here with the waterfront. I'm a third-generation worker, my family's been on the docks since 1905. I've been 35 years as a Marine Clerk, I'll be a member, my dad was 44. We've enjoyed great jobs down in the, in the Harbor area and have been a benefit to the, to the population and to the businesses in the, in the area, and we'd like to keep those jobs here. We have no problem with, with letting some of our work be automated. As long as it's being automated, a machine is doing it, not, not as somebody else out of the area, so that's a big consideration. We're looking at possible cut of 600 jobs on the whole west coast of Marine Clerks, and we only have 2,100 total, but there's roughly 10,500 longshore workers here from Seattle, Washington, to San Diego.
Right, but my next question is that the IW, the union, is negotiating with?
Pacific Maritime Association.
Pacific Maritime Association. And we, you, the, the city give them a contract and a right to do business at the harbor, is that correct? The Pacific Maritime Association?
Pacific Maritime Association represents all the steamship companies and the steved are in.
And we let them bring their ships in there, is that correct?
Correct. We have individual leases with terminal operators and steamship ones.
Leases, right, right, which, and those leases, could they at all be in jeopardy if they fail to negotiate?
In, in my opinion, no. They're, they're, the leases continue if they, even though there's a, a work stoppage.
All right, but if there's a work stoppage, that means they're almost pretty much shutting down the operations for that port and also for the entire city, and that's kind of irresponsible on the part of the, the ship, shippers, in my view.
There's only been, since I've been down there 35 years, there's been one work stoppage, that was in 1971. There was a strike by the union. Prior to that, it was 1948. So we've had very few, we've had three in our history in 68 years. There's a, a very strong possibility there will not be a work stoppage this time. The employer could lock, could lock us out since we're working on a day-by-day basis, or the union could choose to go on strike. I'm looking for neither one of those things to happen, I think we can reach agreement.
So how long has it been since they had a contract?
July 1st, our contract was up, this year.
Right. Well, you know, needless to say that we would like to see something resolved there, and we want to, you know, I like to see the jobs be saved, and that message, you're a commissioner, the commissioner's got to make a statement sometime saying, hey, come together and get it resolved.
We have a commission meeting tomorrow, I will bring it up there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure also, Mr. Padilla, to serve as, for the last year, and hopefully to serve over more years, and I would like to invite all the city council members to come to the, the biggest port in the United States, the Port of Los Angeles, and take a, a working manager of myself, and I'd be glad to take you around and show you what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Labanche.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Councilmember Han is still in committee, she would be here, Ms. Warren, to speak highly of your praises with the great thing about your service to the Port of Los Angeles, to the Harbor Commission. As a commissioner, as you are front labor, and you understand those issues, and you're able to bring it to the rest of your commissioners. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of Councilmember Han, who hopefully will be here before we vote on you, but we know we're going to support you, and also thank you for the interest that you have on the neighborhoods of San Pedro and Wilmington, and especially Wilmington, which needs all the help a neighborhood could have to deal with some of the heavy issues of the importance of the port. And I like the way you talked about the pride of the port, being the largest port in the United States of America, which is so important, and I hope in your tenure, the commission can work hard to revitalize the great ports of call and bring the people back to the water, because I know Janice Han can walk on water because she just walked in this room. So I talked long enough, I filibustered members of council to allow, thank you, Mr. Holden, Mr. President, and members, I want to salute Mr. Holden, Mr. President and members, I want to salute Mr. Warren for his service and thank you for serving the city and the Port of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. And I also want to thank the mayor for appointing me as a Harbor Commissioner. It's been the first time in quite a few years that we've had a member of labor on the commission and I think I'm the first waterfront worker in probably 25 years that served on the Harbor Commission. And it's, I think it's good to have people that actually work in industry to serve on these commissions that know, know the business.
Know the people. Just last Thursday, thanks to the Harbor Department, I had about 65 people from the, my community, which is the area from Silver Lake to North Hollywood to Miracle Mile in the Hollywood area, come down to the port, get a tour by the port, learn some of the issues that affect us and connect them to San Pedro. So it was wonderful to be in the Maritime Museum, which is the largest maritime museum in the west coast of the Pacific Ocean, not just the United States. I keep talking about the Port of Los Angeles, I won't. Thank you. I pass back to the President. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
We kept Stalin for our colleague, Councilmember Han, and so she got here in time. She wanted to have some kind words for you. I was down at the port Friday, the LAPD, the Coast Guard, FBI, sheriffs, they had a mission on the lane victory and it was a scenario regarding some of the concerns regarding terrorism. And I would encourage that the commissioners pay close attention to that. A lot of attention's paid to LAX, but we need to pay close attention to activities at the port and seeing the tankers come in with thousands and thousands of pounds of cargo and the trailers that come in. The other concern I have, and I know that we approve this, Councilman Han brought this forward, the CRA development, I've been down there in the evening, the ports of call, that area definitely needs to have some major enhancement and improvement so we can bring tourists into that area. We go to the marina, which is operated by the County of Los Angeles, for that area, hopefully with the CRA appropriated development and with the Harbor Commission's support can turn that in. Not only is area for cargo, and I know the Alameda Corridor is going to help ship that cargo out throughout the country, but the tourist attraction, because we've got beautiful area down there. And it is really, over the years, deteriorated to the point where few people go there anymore. And I know you probably understand what I'm talking about and I came from labor too, so I understand how we can make that joint labor management work. But in addition to all the other activities you've got to do, the issue of security with terrorism, I know the harbor, the port police do a tremendous job down there. And the scenario that they played out had all the departments working together and it was really phenomenal to watch the cooperation between the law enforcement. But on the other side, when you have the economy and that area can be a very strong economic engine for that part of the city of Los Angeles where people would go down there with their families, enjoy dinner, enjoy the activities. And over the years, it has really, really fallen apart. And I know that Councilman Han's committed to make the improvements, but with the assistance of the commission, I'm sure it can be done a lot quicker, a lot better for all the people of Los Angeles. You may want to comment on that, sir.
Yes, thank you. A couple of issues are, our Port Chief of Police, Noel Cunningham, is doing an excellent job co-chairing the security issues there in the port along with the US Coast Guard, the Port of Long Beach, and several other government agencies. And we're getting close to having an identification system set up and things like that that the federal government is requiring. Also regarding the west side of the channel, that is going to be where we're going to improve the area. Where we're going to have a fishing village there, we're going to have a promenade, a walk, a walk along the west side of the channel so people can come down there and enjoy the scenery and the sights. Also, we hope to bring in other businesses down there to improve it and kind of redevelop the whole area towards where ports of call is now, that has definitely gone in disrepair.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to get here in time to applaud the mayor for reappointing Tommy Warren to the Harbor Commission. Appropriately, I'm not just late. I was in the Commerce Committee meeting, we started at nine, and we had major discussions and debates about two things. One, a bill in the state legislature that would alter our state tidelands trust language to allow for our Harbor Department and the Port of Los Angeles to spend dollars on things like recreation, education, cultural tourism and related uses. The other thing we were discussing was the bill which might bring a solution to the truck traffic that comes in and out of the Port of Los Angeles, spewing, of course, one of the most dangerous emissions anywhere, which is diesel. And it sounds like my colleagues have really gotten the same thing that I've gotten about the harbor area, that we can have both. We can have a first-class port, we can certainly have the economic engine of this entire region, but we can all, we can have an efficient port, but we can also have two communities of Wilmington and San Pedro that can have the kind of quality of life that the rest of the city enjoys. And certainly, it's no secret that I would like to begin to redevelop our whole waterfront and really give it back to the people, which is what the state tidelands trust does. It holds the tidelands in trust for the people of California. And I want to applaud you for your work so far on the Harbor Commission. You know, under the city charter, Dennis, we, and Nick, we changed the language to say that at least one member of the Harbor Commission would be from the surrounding communities, but the mayor took that two steps farther. And he decided one wasn't good enough and he's kept his promise to have three people on the five-member commission be from local, the local area. And as you said, you're one of the first waterfront workers in over 25 years to actually sit on the Harbor Commission. And it seems appropriate since if we're not anything else down there, we are certainly a labor town. And certainly, as we know from the contract negotiations right now, that the whole community down there is very supportive of ILW and the contract negotiations. I was at a rally yesterday with you, over 3,000 people showed up to ask the federal government to not be involved in those contract negotiations. So I think you are one of the perfect representatives, both of the community and certainly of the whole labor force down there to sit on that Harbor Commission. So thank you first and foremost for agreeing to do this because it certainly probably is taking more time than you thought.
It has.
Away from your family, but we appreciate your willingness to do this because I think you, oh, you're one to tell me the time's up. Anyway, thank you, Tommy, and I wholeheartedly support your reappointment and applaud the mayor for seeing what a great contribution you can provide to our whole harbor area.
Thank you, Janice. One other thing, Mr. Padilla, I'd like to say, I really appreciate the support we had from the, from the city council last Friday and the motion was passed by Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Han and unanimously passed here to support that federal government stay out of our negotiations and let us go ahead and negotiate like we have been for 38 years to get a contract. And I think if that happens, we'll get one very rapidly, but if one side or the other has the federal government on their side, it gives a big advantage to that side and it makes collective bargaining very hard. So I really appreciate, I really appreciate Janice yesterday showing up at a rally and it was probably one of the best ones I've ever been to and I think it was done in great taste and I think the word got out everywhere, according to the LA Times this morning and also the San Pedro Daily Grace. So thank you.
Thank you. Other members wishing to be heard on the confirmation of Commissioner Warren? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations. Fourth with on that item, please.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 22 is confirmation of Mr. Kenneth Lombard to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners and that has also been waived by Commerce Energy and Natural Resources Committee.
Mr. Lombard, we come forward. Do not have requests, members of the public, to address the council on the reconfirmation of Commissioner Lombard. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Zine.
President, colleagues, Ken, I know you're a resident of my new community.
Yes.
And can you just give a little explanation as to your previous service? I know you served for a couple moments on the elected charter report commission and some of the other dedication you've had for the city of Los Angeles.
Right. My first commission was the MWD, Metropolitan Water District, of which I served for approximately two years, then went to the fire department and served there for approximately three years before I joined the Department of Water and Power Commissioners.
So you've served with the LA City Fire as a fire commissioner?
Absolutely.
And then...
MWD.
NW, now Water and Power?
Yes.
Do you see with this looming crisis of energy that the state has any impact on Los Angeles region? Are we going to be safe and secure?
Well, we've tried to position ourselves so that we are safe, we're very confident we're going to be safe. I mean, obviously, we have a number of issues that we need to address to ensure that we're safe, but from where we sit today, we're in a very, very comfortable position.
And you're very comfortable sitting at that commission?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lombard, I rise to support your nomination and thank you for your vision that you apply to the Board of Commissioners for Water and Power, having knowledge of water and power and the times that you've served on the commission and now as president. Very important that we have that stability there and I want to thank you. And it's real important that we look at water and power, both water and power. I think we've been focusing on power, but water's going to be an issue next year. This is a drought year. The picture in the paper today of Colorado was very significant, so we have to turn that up a little bit and focus on the issues of water and always power. But I just want to thank you and throw in a little green power too for the future.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, before I comment, I just want Mr. Lombard to know that I just talked to my son, Chris, who tells me that you worked for Grubbin Ellis at one point. Yes. And that you, he was DOMS and that you challenged him in basketball. And he told me to be nice to you anyway, even though you wouldn't let him win.
Okay, I was going to say for the sake of the day, he won.
Okay. Anyway, that's a tough job you have, we know that, trying to keep the energy rates low and trying to keep our water bills low, accommodate the people in this inner city and so on. But since I've been here for the past 15 years, I took notice of the fact that when there's a drought, we get to tell the people to conserve water. Once they conserve water, then of course they raise the rates in order to offset the difference that they lose in revenue for management. And then when they start raining again and the water's plentiful, they don't roll back those rate increases. You're going to be seeing something like that once again. There will be a drought, there is a drought. It's a water shortage. What are the prospects, if at all, raising the rates once we begin to consume water? Like once a week, you water your lawn, two hours a day, you do it one hour and they alternate and so on. There's going to be some kind of a problem there. How you, do you have any idea how we're going to manage it?
Well, you know, Councilman, you know me well enough that I'm going to just give you the straight information as much as I know it. And I think it's totally unreasonable for us to say that there would never be any increases to the rates. But what you've got in this particular commission with the guidance and help of this council and the mayor's office is, you know, the kind of direction that we give to staff is to not, unless we are in a position where from a business perspective, just to make, that it makes sense, obviously, we can't sell water for less than what it costs us. So you're looking at some fiscally responsible people that are behind in trying to make these decisions that are the right decisions, but to sit here and say that there would never be any increases, I mean, I don't, I think that that'd be totally unrealistic on my part.
Have you begun to entertain the thought or the notion that with the water shortage coming in and more development for projects on the drawing board, which will need more water? At one point in time, about 10, 12 years ago, we had occurred freeze construction and development because we didn't have the water. Sewer system was not working. My question is, is the commission entertaining any thought of getting a report or getting feedback with regards to future development or what's on the drawing board right now relates to the water shortage?
Yeah, absolutely. And the council should feel some comfort in recognizing that on the water side of the business, we probably have the foremost expert in Jerry Gavey, who has been with the department for years and years and years and is really a tremendous resource on not only the forward thinking that we need, which you're suggesting, but trying to keep our plans on track, making sure that our rate pairs are comfortable and that we're doing the right thing. But Jerry is just a tremendous resource to the department and a guy that we all look to when it comes to doing the type of planning that you're suggesting.
Right, because we'll see this question again.
Absolutely.
When they talk about water shortage and conserving water and water rationing. So I just want you guys to get ready, get a step ahead of us and start planning for what's inevitable and what's likely to come.
No, we're there, we're definitely planning.
And I have a lot of, another comfort, comfort level, Mr. President, members, that Mr. Lombard is Vice President, Executive Director, whatever, of the Magic Johnson Enterprise. I think that's what they call it, is that correct?
President, yes.
Your president. And it's run very well, managed not only here in the state of California but across the nation. So his skills are sharp. He's fine-tuned as to how you manage a big organization. So I'm glad to see you're over there with the DWP as a commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the service that you've done to this great city, Mr. Lombard.
Thank you.
And not only in the private sector, but also obviously today in the public sector. Wanted to ask, because it's something I think there's been a lot of ferment about, the green power program, the DWP, and what sort of commitment you think the DWP should have towards sustainable power, both generation of and the expansion of the green power program, if any, here in the city? If you'd just comment on that.
Sure. From my position and all the direction that we've given to David Wiggs and staff is that we clearly feel that there needs to be a balance. So in terms of green power, I think you're going to see that there is a level of confidence that this needs to be a component in what we're doing and a healthy component of what the department's moving forward with. But we also believe that the types of disciplines that we all need in place, whether it's the Department of Water and Power or any other business that we run, need to be in place and we need to execute based on those, on that strategy. So as you see, you know, the results of audits and things that we're going, this is an ongoing process for us at the department, just to ensure that while green power is an important part, as any other department within, within the Department of Water and Power is important, what's crucial to us is that we have those disciplines and that we have fiscally responsibility that is being displayed by the general managers that are running those departments. So it'll be there, but I think what you're going to find, and thanks to the controller and the mayor's office and the council, we're going to make sure that they're doing it based on operational disciplines and fiscally responsible type objectives that are going to be put in place.
I think Los Angeles really has the opportunity and by recognition from the Financial Times, for instance, you know, being the best kind of green power program for municipal utility in the world, really have, we have the opportunity to push forward on that envelope and be on the cutting edge. And I hope that that commitment there to do that, obviously in any part of DWP, we want it to be run well, but that overall commitment, especially on the generation front, that we will take this opportunity in the next few years to do that. We fall a little shorter on the generation front, even though we buy some sustainable sources. I think that long-term, it will be a very prudent investment for us to be looking at now, especially even with solar paneling. And I know that the state right now is considering legislation that would not allow any of the customers that we have right now that have solar paneling to give back power at the same price that they bring it in. So in other words, they, all these folks that have invested in solar panel with that promise, once their meters go backwards, we'd sell it wholesale back to the city even though we'd have to buy it at retail. And I know the state legislature is considering that as well, but I think that we need to have a strong voice to continue that sort of leadership that we've had.
We'll be assured that commitment's there and we just want to make sure we do it right.
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation of Commissioner Lombard. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rudy Thomas.
I waited until the vote was cast to let it be known that Mr. Lombard was a resident of the 8th district and so as not to injure your prospects, I decided to wait selectively and say he is a member of the 3rd council district and graciously and tenaciously held by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy Thomas. Thank you. Mr. Lombard? Fourth with on that item. And let's proceed to the next item.
Next item is item number 23, confirmation of Mr. Tony Lucente to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners and that also was waived by Education Neighborhood Committee.
If Mr. Lucente is here, have him come forward, please. This matter, having been waived by committee, requires us to hold a public hearing here in the full council. The council calls for it at this time, Mr. Jim McQuiston on item 23. calls for it at this time, Mr. Jim McQuiston, on item 23.
Good morning, Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I rise in support of Tony Lucente for re-upping into the board. I've worked with him over the years and he's been very, very good to work with, very conducive of giving some good suggestions to the board and also to the department. And I am eagerly waiting to keep working with him in the future.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. This closes the public comment on this item. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm holding in my hands, coincidentally, right now, a copy of the Studio City Residents Association Newsletter. I just got it in my mail today. And I just want to stand and congratulate you on everything you've done for Los Angeles and for Studio City over the last several years. You're the gold standard, you're the gold standard for a neighborhood group, and you personally are the gold standard for leadership in a neighborhood group. Because I got to tell you, oftentimes, it is the case in this city that the leaders of a group have much less influence than you might expect with the members of their group. And you are the exception to that rule because everybody knows you listen to both sides, you are fair, you are even-handed, you have no agenda other than the promotion and betterment of Studio City. You have really, you've really just set a remarkable example for community leaders throughout this city. And we are especially grateful that you serve in this new extraordinarily important capacity of helping to grow the system of neighborhood councils and monitoring them in the most effective and productive way. So congratulations to you. Thank you again for your commitment to serve. I know you serve on a lot of other boards in the city of Los Angeles, but this is a very important one and we're very appreciative.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Gruehl, followed by Ms. Han, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Labons. Ms. Gruehl.
I just want to stand in support of Tony Lucente, who is someone all of us know from his activities on the Studio City Residents Association, but also as DUN members. And I've been to a couple of the commission meetings and have been impressed with the time and commitment that you all are putting into making these neighborhood councils really effective and that you're listening to our community members that really feel it's important to have a neighborhood council program in Los Angeles. And so I am pleased that you're willing to stay on. I think now until 2007, we get you during this period of time. But I want to say, as I simulated to one of the commissioners earlier, the importance of us, information sharing and ways in which we can improve. This is an evolving process. And so as you come to issues that you feel we can address on a citywide basis, on a policy-wide basis, to improve the effectiveness of our neighborhood councils or commitment, whether it be financially or structurally on neighborhood councils, I hope that you will come to us and so many of us that are supporters of the neighborhood council concept. It was exciting two weeks ago for my colleagues, Dennis and Janice and Tom and Eric, to be there with almost 800 people participating in neighborhood councils. And we got incredible feedback from people about the dialogue, they learned a lot about other parts of the city. And so I want to compliment you and the commission for putting that together. So we look forward to working with you and thank you for your ongoing commitment. I don't think you really have a job normally, you just do all these wonderful things for the community. I won't tell your company that, but anyways, thank you for your commitment, Tony.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. I too rise in support of your reappointment to this great commission, Tony. And what so many of my colleagues have already said is, you know, you really do represent the kind of people we were looking for to shepherd this new revolution that's happening in the city of Los Angeles. And what I appreciate about you particularly is that you were involved way back during the charter reform days. And you actually, I remember you many times on a Saturday morning, showing up at a meeting to keep pushing us, keep encouraging us, keep, you kept trying to hold us accountable in terms of neighborhood councils and really wanted us to go in the right direction, including that in our new city charter. So you were there before, you know, it was formed, you were there when it was in concept stage only, and now you're there as we are trying to give birth to neighborhood councils all over the city of Los Angeles. And it certainly hasn't been an easy first year. There have been problems that I think we didn't think about. There have been arguments that I don't think we even envisioned. There have been hurt feelings within the neighborhoods that I don't think we planned for. But nevertheless, I'm very happy with the way you have personally handled a lot of these issues. And one of the things I have great confidence in you and the other commissioners is that you will be able to keep these debates, these arguments, these conflicts within the neighborhoods. And they won't ever have to come necessarily to city council or to a council member. And I know there have been neighborhood councils that have tried to come to my office and have me get involved in some of the disputes, whether it was a boundary dispute or a bylaw dispute. And I kept steadfastly saying, no, this is the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, this is the Board of Neighborhood Council Commissioners that will solve this. And so far, you've been able to do that case after case after case. And you've had long hours, I know. But we want you to know that when the history books are written and neighborhood councils are no longer an experiment, but at the core of the very fabric that this city is made up of, you will be one of those shining stars that really helped us shepherd in a new era of government in the city of Los Angeles. So I really do want to thank you for your commitment.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Tony.
Yes.
The man, as Jack Weiss says, the gold standard. I think you're above that gold standard.
Thank you.
You've done extremely well in representing the community that you reside. Secession is a major issue in the city of Los Angeles. Looking at today's daily news, it doesn't look like that issue is gaining momentum, it's losing momentum. When we developed through the Charter Commission, neighborhood councils, it was designed to bring Los Angeles government closer to the people. And as we've seen transform, as Councilman Rahon mentioned, there are some disputes, there are some border disputes. We never, ever envisioned border disputes. We thought that communities are established, they'd work within those boundaries, everyone would be happy, it would work well for the communities. And in my district, in the West San Fernando Valley, we do have some border disputes. And it goes to your commission. We have said, let your commission handle it. DUN is there as an appropriate department to handle that, that's the responsibility. So I hope that we can come to some resolution and that these border disputes don't continue, because honestly, we never envisioned that ever happening, just the inclusion. The other question is the dollars. The communities keep asking, the ones that have been certified, where is the money? I met with Greg Nelson and discussed that with him. We really need to come forward with, through the commission. The mayor has made the appropriations in the budget, I think it's $3 million they can put in for the funds. I have given out of my general purpose fund, two that have been certified, $20,000 apiece in Warner Center and West Hills communities. I've got some others online now. But what we really need to do is to move that forward in an aggressive fashion. And I was at the Congress of Neighborhood Councils we had recently, which was a phenomenal turnout. I mean, to see the people and the communities and to see the camaraderie and the focus of energy, it was really outstanding. So my congratulations to you, you've done a great job. I know you continue to do a great job. And I seen our audience, Tamara Scott, who was one of the members of the Charter Commission staff that helped bring this all about. I see her just arrived with her daughter, reporter for the Daily Journal. So it's been a long time in coming to get to this point, and it's in your hands for the next few years to get that airplane off the ground and flying high so these neighborhood councils can deliver what we all envisioned, and we know they can do, to keep L.A. safe and keep it together. Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lucente, congratulations. Thank you for your service. I also want to ask, what do you see, neighborhood, why, what do you see hooking the city together? And that's the setup, because I know you have a great interest. And Councilmember Reyes will like to hear this about the Los Angeles River.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
How do you, how do you connect with neighborhoods and the Los Angeles River? I know you've been very involved in Studio City and the river. Now you're a neighborhood commissioner for the Commission on Neighborhoods. Just tell us how you feel about the whole city.
Well, I think that what's interesting for me as a commissioner on this commission has been my exposure to different parts of the city. And one thing that ties the city together is the Los Angeles River. And communities have an opportunity to connect with that river at different points, whether it be in large projects such as is underway in Studio City, or little pocket parks where people are really formalizing the ways that they interact with that river as a public, open space. People are using it today, we just need to formalize that and then open it up even more. But it connects all parts of our city and it's one thing that we all have in common.
Well, thank you, and I wish you good luck on all your work there.
Thank you.
And the only advice is don't make any, encourage all neighborhood councils not to be bureaucratic, encourage them to be on the edge, encourage them to just be focused on what they would want from their neighborhoods. And then it's up to the commission and all the city family to deliver for the people who we are so honored to serve. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Lucente, is that the way you say it?
Lucente.
Lucente.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You from back east?
Ohio.
Ohio, pretty close. Anyway, you were neighborhood councils. My question to you is this, I never thought they were going to work out. You know, I didn't ever believe that they have the power, the juice that they were supposed to have. And they would be, after a period of time, they'd get a little disillusioned that they're going to make some changes in government that they really won't. Do you think they're going to have some influence? And if so, why is the Palisades Homeowners Association saying they don't want to join neighborhood council? Why are you saying they have more power not formalizing their organization as a council, but staying a neighborhood association as they are? Maybe you can answer that while I wait.
Yeah, I would answer it two ways. One is, one only has to look at the...
Mr. President? Go ahead.
One only has to look at all the associations throughout this city that are not even a formal part of the process and gauge the influence that they have on city government today and understand the value and the influence that advisory groups have. And so that, you know, I think has already been proven. And now that they're part of the process, I think that influence will expand further. I really have been supportive of neighborhood councils for the communities that necessarily weren't already organized. Palisades area, they're very well organized. So perhaps neighborhood councils is not the way for them to go at this point in time. But there's many communities throughout Los Angeles that don't have that funding behind them or the stature of some of those members of that group. And that's what I think neighborhood councils is bringing. It's for those communities that we really need this.
Okay, right. So it's okay to come in and you can have more influence. It's one way of organizing various communities localized.
Absolutely.
As compared to some organization like the Palisades Homeowners Association, lots of resources already can still do their thing independently of being identified or associated with the formal organization as a neighborhoods association.
Correct.
All right. I'm going to vote for you for sure. The Studio City Homeowners Association is one that I've got to know and appreciate and respect for their good judgment.
Thank you.
1989, I think, they gave me a big resigning endorsement, and they always supported me then and thereafter. So it's a good idea for them, it's a good idea for me, and I'm going to vote for you.
Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, Mr. Reyes.
I just want to say thank you. Councilman Labons mentioned the river, and I want to thank you. It's a process to convert the image of the river. Too, far too long, we treat it like our backyard. We have to make it our front yard. And the beauty of it is that, come in your front yard, you can greet your neighbors, you can come together as a city. So I want to thank you for initiating that and making Studio City one of those examples. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard on this item. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Reconfirm forthwith on this item, please. Next item.
Next item is, Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing. Council should open the hearing and continue the hearing in ordinance to September 13th for consideration of the Prop 218 ballot results. I'm sorry, September 3rd.
Okay, items 1 through 4 now before us. I do not have requests, members of the public, to address the council on these items. So we shall open the public hearing and, as the clerk has recommended, continue these matters to September 3rd immediately upon return from council recess. Next items, please.
Next items, items for which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 18.
Items 6 through 18 now before us. Public hearings haven't been held on these items. Motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials? Any specials on these items? Item 8 called special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Members, this being the last week before the council recess, I will be sending all matters forthwith. Forthwith on approved items, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 24 through 56.
Items 24 through 56 now before us. I do have cards on items 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45. That's 37 through 45. One card submitted on each of those items by Jim McQuiston. So we'll hear from Jim on those items altogether. Item 33 called special by Mr. Zine.
And, Mr. President, there's a substitute motion on number 55. I believe that has been distributed to all the council members.
Okay, item 55, let's call that special. Other specials? Request to continue item number 48 for one day. That'll be to August 14th.
49 special.
Hold on a second. 48, continue one day. Any objection to continuing item 48? Seeing none. Without objection. Item 48 is continued. Ms. Perry?
Yes, I wanted to make an amendment on this item. I can do that verbally, and I have a hard copy here for the clerk.
Item number...
49.
49, technical in nature?
Yeah.
Go ahead and read it.
Okay. You want me to do it now? Okay, great. That the Community Redevelopment Agency expedite the submission of invoices for the Venice Hope Park area project to conform with the October 30th, 2002 extended deadline.
Okay, so we shall consider item 49 as amended. Language to be submitted in writing to the clerk. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items, including item 49 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Next item is, Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda, items 58 through 61 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I do have cards on item number 58. Let's call that special. On the balance of the items, do not have cards who are shouting the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any other specials? Other specials, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 57 is closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Hold closed session items on the desk.
Next item, going back to the items called special, item number 8 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
So let's take out of order, if you will, members of the council, items 37 through 45. I want to call on Jim McQuiston to come forward and provide public comments on all of these items at once.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. All of these items involve preferential parking. And one of the problems with preferential parking is that people like to keep people out of their neighborhoods. And one of the Supreme Court decisions which is handed down after we organized our parking ordinance, Sands versus Rowe, said that people do have the right to travel even interstate. That means that we're really in an unconstitutional position if we try to keep people out of our neighborhoods except for the residents. I support a limited parking, one hour, two hours...
I support a limited parking, one hour, two hours, fifteen minutes, anything like that, which the residents can apply for parking permits and get some relief. But when we say that people cannot park on the street except residents, we're going a little bit too far. And so I've gone through all of these and wherever there is an absolute restriction on people other than residents, I would suggest those have to be modified so that that particular section has to be changed. I wouldn't mind a one-hour parking zone that was twenty-four hours a day, but the problem is that we cannot keep people from parking on our streets. It's just unconstitutional. I've talked to, I've sent some letters to the city attorney, but I haven't gotten any real response. I've tried to get ahold of them this morning and unfortunately, the person involved was not there and yesterday also. So we do need a little bit of work on this. However, I also want to say that the temporary parking permits are supposed to be temporary. Some of these have been in place for four years. They're only supposed to be because of fires, floods, earthquakes, something like that. Building permits only are good for two years and some of these now have gone four years. So either they should be permanent or else they shouldn't be, just gone on and on. Also, the environmental analysis in these is sadly deficient and, you know, we just got sued because there wasn't a good environmental impact report on one and that parking district had to be canceled. It's really suspect, the environmental analysis that was done on these temporary parking permits. So I think really, my suggestion to the city council, we don't want to get into a whole bunch of lawsuits over these things. The environmental analysis was deficient and I would suggest that we disallow any parking that is restricted solely to residents. We have to let people park, especially where a destination, people are coming to visit our city, they want to see our city. We can't say, no, you can't park in our city. And that's what we're turning into with these total prohibitions of parking. Give the people at least an hour to park and I think everyone will be happy, including the Supreme Court. The prior Supreme Court case that started preferential parking was because people would not park in a parking lot that was available. We're talking now about restricting parking spaces so that in our new planning areas, we're not even giving enough people parking lots to park in. So we do have to worry about this. It's going to get worse and worse as we get to six million extra people in Southern California. It's not going to go away and we just don't want to see all our money spent in litigation. Please, please think about taking out these parking restrictions that are restricted to residents only and put some kind of a parking limit on.
Thank you.
That is compatible with the Supreme Court's decision on constitutionality. That Supreme Court decision, by the way, is Sands versus Rowe. It involved the state of California on the right to travel and it's also good for interstate travel specifically. And that was a recent court case which really hasn't been analyzed yet in the literature and we don't want to have to go be the guinea pigs to go through all these analyses. Let's just go along with it and make everybody happy at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. This concludes public comments for items thirty-seven through forty-five. Members wishing to be heard on any of these items or to call any specials, otherwise I believe we're ready for a vote. Ms. Sikowski.
I appreciate Mr. McQuiston's analysis, although I think that Supreme Court case which talked about our streets being made open for travel, you can make a distinction between travel and parking. And I think each of these areas, I know one of the parking districts, preferential parking districts is in my district, and it is something that when we talk about having the street made available for residents to park, it's as a consequence of problems, whether through planning, whether through employers who don't make available employee parking. And so that most of these are near reasonably congested streets, reasonably congested areas that don't have adequate parking and so the communities park in front of people's houses and denying the people who live there the right to park. I think the Department of Transportation, having worked with neighborhoods, has come up with an appropriate threshold requiring significant majority petition, allowing those petitions to be altered where necessary, working closely with council offices, with neighborhoods, with finding alternatives and making people work and in some cases pay for the parking for the businesses that they're shopping at. We are doing better on planning, we are not taking parking away, we are requiring more and more parking to be provided along our business strips, but I think in a way of preservation, we talked a lot about with Mr. Lucente's confirmation, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and these are neighborhoods asking and seeking help and asking in an appropriate mechanism where the Department of Transportation has gone through environmental clearance as we now know we need to. And again, allowing a capability, a capability for modifying where needed, where appropriate as neighborhoods try to work through these things. So I would recommend approval of these and actually compliment the Department of Transportation in working to clear up the backlog because as we go out to our different community groups and meetings, we hear an awful lot about traffic issues, parking issues, and neighborhoods looking for ways to solve them. This is one and I think we should move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sikowski. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, members, we have items thirty-seven through forty-five before us. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those matters are approved. Madam Clerk, I believe Mr. Zine's questions have been answered on item fifty-five. We can proceed with the vote on item fifty-five.
And fifty-five also had a substitute motion that has been distributed.
So we shall consider the substitute motion for item fifty-five. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Substitute motion for item number fifty-five is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number eight was called special by council member Zine.
Mr. Zine, item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is the graffiti award that it's taken eight months to get to this point and finally, we have it before us. Encourage the support, it increases the reward from five hundred to one thousand dollars. Also, a motion that was generated by council member Hahn and myself to advertise on the website, advertise the police stations, libraries, and other locations. We have a situation where the city spends millions of dollars a year on graffiti eradication and hopefully this will help us as city leaders, give people in the community the opportunity to turn in some of the individuals who are destroying our neighborhoods with this proliferation of graffiti everywhere in the city of Los Angeles. So we appreciate the fact that it's happening, it's taken eight months to get here and encourage the public to turn in those individuals who are marking on the walls, the tagging crews, et cetera. It's an easy way to get a thousand dollars and help clean up your community. Another campaign that the city is launching into is additional advertisement on the anti-graffiti campaigns, but we spend millions and millions of dollars a year to keep the city clean from graffiti. And it's interesting, I've traveled up to Paso Robles and I went to a Walmart up in Paso Robles, they don't lock up their spray paint. I know we have an ordinance out here that requires spray paint to be locked. No graffiti in Paso Robles. I went to another place in northern part of their state, King City, no graffiti, they don't lock up the spray paint. So we're addressing this vigorously, we're asking the people of Los Angeles to help us eradicate this by turning in those individuals who are involved in graffiti and you do get one thousand dollars. So I thank the council for the approval and we'll be voting on that. Janice Hahn, I'm sure you have something to say about that because graffiti affects your district as much as it affects us in the San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Ms. Hahn.
I do have something to say about this. I just obviously want to stand in support of this. This is a problem, as you said, that the city is spending millions and millions of dollars on, but it is probably the one issue in a neighborhood or community that most contributes to blight, to visual blight. And it sends a message to criminals that this neighborhood, this community, nobody cares about and as we know, other crimes then are committed on top of spray painting and graffiti. What I'm most happy about, and we will hopefully hear this on city council soon, but the fund that this money comes out of has been very short and that's been part of the problem. We only had about five thousand dollars in this fund and we were unsure whether we not, we wanted to increase the fine because if we increase, I mean, the reward, if we increase the reward, would we have the money to actually pay people? We actually came up with a pretty creative way in budget and finance last week to add about fifty thousand dollars to this fund so that indeed, this won't be a shallow promise that won't be something that we can't really pay on when people come forward. So we're going to have a fund that's going to be fully funded, we're going to begin advertising this in high schools and neighborhood councils. We really hope people will come forward if they see someone defacing or tagging property in any way, if they will report that and they're helpful in the arrest and conviction and prosecution, they will indeed get a thousand dollars. And we think this is going to be a huge step forward in finally trying to get a handle on the graffiti problem in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Did you wish to be heard again, Mr. Zine?
Just briefly, Mr. President, regarding the arrest and conviction, I alert the city attorney's office, once the arrest is made and they dispel that case, whether it's community service or something else, that will qualify for the reward. So once the person brings that individual forward, there is a provision, if they do get some other sentence and now that they're going to jail, they'll still receive that reward, reward for one thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item number eight is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number thirty-three, called special by council member Zine.
Mr. Zine, item thirty-three.
Mr. President, staff has answered my questions on that. Thank you.
Okay, other members with questions or comments on item thirty-three? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item thirty-three. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item thirty-three is approved. Next item?
Next item is item number thirty-six, called special by council member Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I understand DOT staff is not here prepared to answer that and I request that we continue this matter one day.
Members request to continue item number thirty-six for one day? Without objection, so order. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number fifty-eight, called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
This will be the public comment period for item number fifty-eight. The council calls for it at this time, Suzanne Chilton, followed by Dr. James Bethard, Larry Gross, and Amelia Peters.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am a resident of One North Venice Boulevard in Venice and we are in the process of being opted out from federal to city help. I'm the runt of the litter in that I'm the youngest in the building, which is twenty years old. I've been there ten, I'm in my mid-seventies, most of them are in their eighties and are disabled. I brought with me three brave souls who are not afraid of reprisals. One, just to show that we're not one of those big six thousand some statistics, one was in Gone with the Wind. And we have another gentleman here who has diabetes and has one leg and is blind. We have another resident who has MS and remission. The whole building was constructed and approved by the Coastal Commission on the basis of the fact that it was going to be all for senior citizens and disabled people. And now they're taking the same people and remandering them to you to help as if we were a lot of stray animals. We have been the victims of non-notification. They haven't told us one thing until the wonderful organization, the CES, told us that we had been opted out to city oversight. We're down here today to try to get you to have your city attorney look in to some malfeasances that have gone on, non-notification and other such acts and see if we can't put a cessation to being treated as if we lived on death row. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Dr. James Bethard. And we do have a number of public comment cards submitted and ask speakers for brevity.
Good morning, senior council. Ladies and gentlemen, councilperson. My name is Janice Bethard, instigator of the Bushvets of America DAV for over thirty-five years. I bring to you, to this council, some considerations. On this issue that's brought before you, we have fraudulent and a chance for a HUD contract to be expired this thirty-first, should this go through for the mark-to-market issue. We have from the Department of Aging, some fifteen programs which has given revenue to the city of Los Angeles to the tune of fifteen million dollars over the last year. We also have the Fair Housing Act for the disabled, which has given to the city of Los Angeles twenty-three million dollars for the last year. We also have under the Rent Stabilization Acts, under four fifty-one, Article One, Chapter Fifteen, the rent stabilization of proper notification, and this includes fraudulent notification that has been imposed by these six gentlemen or property owners that are before you today. If this issue continues on, we will find that there will be a miscarriage of justice in and about these ladies and gentlemen that are elderly and disabled. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let us take a pause in the public comment on this item. Mr. Labonge, for an introduction.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Gross, thank you. At this time, it's my honor, we have some guests all the way from Yardley, Pennsylvania, right here. Edie Kamenski and Tanya Kamenski and also we have Victor Dai, who are here. Yardley, Pennsylvania is not far from the Delaware River, river right across from the great Philadelphia, PA. So it's great to have you here in Los Angeles and visiting our chambers and you have a wonderful son named Josh, who we see sometimes in Silver Lake. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Returning to public comment now, Mr. Gross.
My name's Larry Gross. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Economic Survival. We appreciate the tremendous support demonstrated by seven council members led by council member Reyes in signing on to the motion before you. It's a true shame that we need this motion at all, but unfortunately, our federal housing agency, HUD, which is supposed to be the protector and provider of subsidized housing, is abdicating its trusted responsibility. That's why it's imperative that the city step in and using every avenue in your means, take immediate and decisive action to stop the illegal opt-out of the Section Eight contracts at three separate buildings. Without this action, we will see an increased loss of affordable housing and increased hardship for low-income tenants. Owners of these buildings have been given the green light by HUD to illegally opt-out of their Section Eight contracts, even though they have not filed the required state one-year notices and the federally required one-year notices are faulty. HUD is refusing to uphold its own laws, claiming it's not required to, even though its own regulations indicate it must recognize state and local laws. It's now up to the city to protect its interests and the interests of its people. You have the ability to save this housing on a short term. LA has the greatest number of these units in the country. It makes up a large percentage of our affordable housing. If the owners get away with these opt-outs, it sends a signal to other landlords that they can take similar illegal actions without facing any penalty. I know that the city attorney will take immediate and decisive legal action or else we'll lose these buildings. Yesterday, the city of Claremont filed this suit trying to save the buildings in their city and so if Claremont can do it, the city of LA can do it. We thank you and urge unanimous support of this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our following speakers will be Amelia Peters, Amelia Peters, followed by Eddie Brown, Rick Oherstun, and Elena Pop.
I am Amelia Peters, and I have lived at One North Venice Boulevard ever since it was opened. Now, they want to kick me out at 88. I don't know where in the world I'll go. That's just how bad it is. I'm not going to say much more, everybody. So that was very nice to tell you what was wrong. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
Eddie Brown? Mr. Brown's no longer with us. Rick Ogerström?
Hello, Richard Ogerström, member of the Department Association of Greater Los Angeles. Good morning, council. We don't represent any of these owners of these buildings that are named here, and we're certainly not asking the council to forgive any illegal actions that they took. It's interesting, though, that the owner's desire to get out of the program may reflect to some extent some of the actions that the city council has taken this year. Our concern, though, is more housing. We're here to try and promote more housing, number one, homeownership, number two, rental housing. In both cases, we're very concerned about low-income housing. But to do this, to get more housing, we must attract those who can and will build. So I want this council to be sure not to consider breaking or altering any contracts that were made a year ago or 20 years ago. It sends the wrong message, and what it'll do is it'll create an atmosphere where no one will participate in the future. You may save dozens of homes now, but you'll sacrifice thousands in the future. We've been over this before. Developers can and will go elsewhere. Your contracts that you have with different developers are your promises that were made, whether they were made by this council or a council 20 years ago, and you've inherited these promises. And to break any of these contracts or to alter them now or in the future guarantees that your future contracts, your future promises will be meaningless. We're just afraid, you know, be careful where you go with this type of track. Don't get to the point where we try to alter with legislation things that were started 20 years ago.
Thank you very much. Following speakers are Elena Pop, followed by Patricia Molina and Ramona Wilson.
Elena Pop, Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. Interestingly enough, I concur with all of the prior speakers, including the immediately prior speaker. We're not asking you to alter any contracts, we're asking you to enforce the law here. The developers of these buildings made agreements to stay in the program for certain periods of time and to keep the contracts intact, and there are several things that have taken place, or acts that have taken place, or in direct violation of what they agreed to do. What we're asking you to do is enforce the law. When I came into the building, somebody asked me, "Why do you care about this one-year notice? It just gives you a one-year delay." Well, there's two answers to that. The first is, the law is the law. If I win a red light and I don't hit anyone, do I get to tell the officer, "Don't give me a ticket, I didn't cause an accident?" No, I get a ticket one way or the other. Well, there is a notice requirement here, and it hasn't been abided by, and part of the purpose of that notice requirement is to allow tenants to prepare for the ultimate changes in their lives that occur when developers are allowed to exit these programs. The second issue is that year will also give us time to work with nonprofits to possibly secure a permanent solution to the loss of this housing, and I think that also needs to be supported. And I thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Molina?
Thank you very much. I'm here in behalf of my mother, Mrs. Erin Molina. She is a resident at 841, part of the L.A. Pro Six Apartments. She has been a resident of this building for 29 years. She has been a member of this community for almost 40 years. And her and the rest of the tenants of the building are being told that they have to leave in no regards with their medical conditions, their age, which one of them is just turned 90 years old. My mother's 74, and they have not been taken into consideration whatsoever by the owners or the prior owners of this building. And I hope that you'll be able to help so that they can get a real good investigation about what's been going on with this building and the rest of the buildings. Because I don't think it's fair that they're just being kicked out because they want to raise the rent, and in some cases, they've already raised it more than 50%. And new students are coming in, and like the tenants say, "We don't have anything against the students from USC." You know, they're our neighbors, but they're also being taken advantage of, not just us, the tenants. And I do hope that you'll be able to support the tenants, because they do need the help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Ramona Wilson?
Ramona Wilson?
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm not very, I'm not, I'm new at this, so bear with me. I'm a resident at 1137 West 25th Street. I'm also a L.A. Pro Six tenant. It seems like HUD has thrown us to the wolves. I'm not totally certain, but that's what it appears like. I was evicted in June. They sent my rent back to me in the mail from their attorneys, the new managers that we have now. We had no explanation, no anything. I'm on a fixed income. I paid my rent on the 9th of the month. When the new managers took charge, I made the new managers aware that, you know, that I was aware that the rent was due on the 1st, but that I get my money on the 9th. And he was like, "Well, how have you been doing this?" And I says, "Well, you know, with the previous managers." And I says, "Well, that was our agreement, it was okay." He said, "No problem." So they evicted me. This was the grounds they used, that I'm late paying my rent. But I guess after some careful thought, they probably realized they didn't have some great grounds to stand on, because I mean, how you going to tell the judge, "Well, you've been accepting her rent, and all of a sudden, now you're not going to accept her rent on the 9th." So they dismissed my case, sent me a letter saying, you know, grounds for dismissal, but yet it still holds at the courthouse that I have an eviction on my record now. You know, I'm just saying, they've been playing real, real dirty. There's been some tenants that live in my building that's been there like 24 years that don't understand English well. They tricked them, had them to sign agreements that, you know, they don't understand, saying they're going to vacate on certain days just to get them out of there. It's been absolutely terrible. I ask you guys really to be receptive to this motion. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment for item number 58. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I think you can hear in the tone of voice, in the look of despair, there's a sense of urgency, what's going on in the city today. I'd like to share with you some statistics that could be troubling. I think we're hitting the tip of the iceberg. According to the 2000 SCAG report, there's a total of 12,521 units at risk. Approximately 70%, 11,000, 12,000 units are located in the area of Los Angeles. The city currently has 50,000 tenants receiving Section 8, and additional 80,000 are waiting to be leased. Our action today, we're dealing with 237 project-based sectioned housing units that will be lost. A lot of cities, starting on August 31st, will be doing this. Exercise immediate remedies. So legal actions we're taking are very appropriate. As has been already mentioned, HUD has taken a position that cannot enforce local laws. So talk to us to take this measure. What I'm asking to consider is that we do not allow us to deepen the chasm between the sense of a dividing and growing of two cities. We have a whole section of the city that is becoming vulnerable to those who have the ability to hire expensive attorneys, to hire castos, to contract persons that can intimidate, and to take advantage of those who are the most vulnerable, which are seniors and those who do not understand the language. So today, we will be sending a message, if I can get a vote, to essentially force the process to follow. An a-vote will support the immediate commencement of legal actions where junket belief to stop termination of the Section 8 contracts. And for the city of Los Angeles, the City Attorney to conduct necessary investigations into all of the violations of federal and local law. We'll like to add one technicality to my motion, which is to add, after litigation, and pursue legal remedies as appropriate, to enjoy termination. So I believe we shared that with the clerk, and you have that additional language. I wish I could have gotten all of you to sign on, but it's illegal. But I know overall, in the constituency, when it comes to protecting constituents, especially those who do not have the luxury of time, the means to come back and forth, or the ability to communicate, the kind of harm that's being inflicted upon them. I ask for an a-vote. Thank you. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, the one gentleman who spoke against this proposal, and he's over there talking behind the post, so he won't hear this. It's upsetting to me. The fact that it matters that some time ago, I had to vote against. I thought I was voting against. But my votes come down in my view, and sometimes, one is fair and right, and sometimes the other is not. We look to apartment owners to provide for those who cannot provide for themselves, and make them affordable. We also have specific programs where we have so many units set aside in apartment complexes for Section 8, or those making them affordable. And we give some compensation to those individuals who would like to develop apartments in the City of Los Angeles. But for that individual to stand before this mic, who's hiding behind the post over there, who's threatening this council, who's saying, "We'll take our development elsewhere," I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." I want him to hear me say, "Take your development and go." es de apoyar, lo que señor Reyes ha presentado, y lo he hecho adecuadamente, claro, quizás haya una excepción para esto, pero no. Le pondremos nombre, quiero simplemente decir. Conciende agua, señor, pero cualquier amenaza que el señor Holden ha entendido, él obviamente cree en este asunto bastante seriamente, yo tomo la posición de que cualquier táctica es inadecuada, que yo mismo fui a hablar con la persona que hizo la presidencia previamente a la cual dirigimos, él decide, si él decide él puede hablar por sí mismo, para que se sea apreciado, no hubo amenaza, no hubo atención de amenaza, sí, no estamos de acuerdo, no estamos de acuerdo, y luego decidimos, pero en conclusión es de que tenemos una política de, de actuar, y así lo haremos, pero personas honorables pueden estar de acuerdo, que están de acuerdo, que yo creo que debemos apreciar que no hay amenazas, ni cargos, ni contramenazas en nada por ese estilo, en este caso señor Holden, confiamos que esto se encargará de este asunto y no tendrá que ser nada extraordinario para corregir, una actitud aparente. No sé por qué está usted, porque está usted ya. Me está echando a mí directas, pero, hablando acerca de la falta de viviendas, sí, viviendas, bajo recursos, a un lado pueden tener, hay personas que han invertido, y quieren canales, pero ellos están disfrutando. La seguridad de arrendamiento seguro de largo tiempo, por las personas que están arrendando, eso bajo sección 8. Creo yo que necesitamos como esto en mente, algo que se ha sugerido quizás estos, está cargada bajo la ley de estabilización de inquilinos, esto no, es una persona que ahora están viendo activamente, pero. Porque se están siendo patricionados, por HAD, no sé qué influencia tenemos ahí, esto es exactamente, es la opción de HAD, pero, quizás debe haber un cambio en nuestra ley de estabilización de renta, para que cuando, como estos se cobran toda la renta que está siendo pagado para la unidad hoy, permanecerá a ese nivel, y permanecerá dentro de la ley de estabilización de renta, quizás esto se animará a propietarios, que no estoy sufriendo que nadie es estancio egoísta, pero quizás las personas así, serán optadas para recibir más dinero, pero creo que, al menos debe de reconsiderar eso señor Reyes, creo yo que esto podría ser una solución, y no necesariamente va a apoyar a estas personas, pero quizás podrá prevenir esto, esto no ocurre, hay personas quizás puedan reconsiderar acerca de si permanecer o no permanecer en este programa de sección 8. Gracias concejal, y colega concejal, gracias por esa idea, también quiero compartir con el resto del consejo y para el público por televisión, que estamos tomando pasos para reconstruir el ambiente para poder tener más viviendas, y para la comunidad de desarrollo de construcción, tiene derecho, debemos de encontrar maneras de que este movimiento sea mejorado, y así tratar con esta necesidad de viviendas. Queremos presentar otro reporte, que tiene ante el consejo para así de residencias en áreas no residenciales, los que están dispuestos a invertir. También tenemos una nueva zona, la RAZona, que va a ser construida, es trabajo que provino del Comité de Alimentos Azul, el alcalde ha jugado un papel increíble, y sirve como un jefe en este proceso. Un concejal, Wendy Gruel, ha estado acompañando y trabaja con el concejal Garcetti, así que estamos intentando para desarrollar el ambiente para poder tener más ambientes, eso es lo que tenemos que hacer, entendiendo esto desde un punto de vista para dignidad y así presentarlo, pero cuando llega a la ciudad esto, cuando llegamos a toda la solución a la ciudad, y es muy tarde, tenemos que pensar, inmediatamente estamos esta asistencia legal, inmediatamente tenemos que hacer que las personas que están viendo la RAZona, es una zona, la zona, la zona es una zona que si estos miembros del consejo optan a adoptarla, que se puede estimular un ambiente donde viviendas y se pueden edificar donde, para que tenga sentido para el mercado, quizás fue una amenaza leve de este caballero que se irá, por si se irá, le garantizo que alguien más entrará, y hablaremos acerca del asunto de respeto y dignidad y mantenimiento de casas de viviendas para las comunidades y personas que están dispuestas a pagar por esto.
Gracias, señor presidente, y gracias concejal Reyes por este motion, obviamente mi segundo, y tengo mucho apoyo a esto seriamente, creo yo que todos se han dicho, pero cuando estamos hablando, quería preguntarle al señor. Una pregunta. Una de las cosas que hablamos en el comité de alquiler y tratando de liberar este botellón, y lo que el concejal Reyes acaba de decir, con la zona RAZ, y el uso redactivo, una de las cosas que hablamos fue lobbymiento del gobierno federal sobre el nivel de sección 8 ahora, que realmente no refleja el precio de la vivienda aquí en Los Ángeles, y ver si hemos podido hacer movimiento en cuanto a presentar esto como parte de nuestro programa federal, y si tenemos algún camino allí. La autoridad de viviendas aquí, han estado involucrados en esto. Es parte de la política de la ciudad, que creo que Steve debe hablar sobre esto directamente.
Salud, Richard, del departamento de alquiler, en realidad algunos de mis personal trabajan con el personal del departamento de alquiler para hacer un estudio de niveles de renta, para hacer un caso de aumento, porque San Francisco aumentó, y creo que San Francisco ya aumentó la renta, pero.
Steve Rennahan, director de sección 8 del departamento de alquiler, hemos tenido éxito con el aumento en los niveles de renta, me parece que hay un aumento aproximado, hemos obtenido un aumento de 24% en los últimos dos años, esto nos ha mantenido competitivos en la mayoría de las ciudades, todavía no es adecuado en las zonas del sur, mucho en el valle San Fernando. Tenemos solicitudes para el aumento de renta que deberían darnos algunas áreas, algunos exácticos, efectivamente, el primero de octubre. Si nos mantienen informados, algunos de los defensores aquí, en cuanto a poder comunicar directamente con Washington y el departamento de alquiler, creo que sería crucial para nosotros tener ese colectivo junto, que más que cualquier otro, obviamente liberará la habilidad de los propietarios, que todos los que están buscando, si les dan saber si hay algunos puntos clave para hacer ese lobbymiento, y podemos estar en comunicación con los defensores también, gracias.
Sí, como ustedes hablan sobre esto. Mencho, como ustedes hablan sobre esto. Todos saben, los retos que está corriendo en todo el país, toca la sección 8. Espero, y sé que Gary ha dejado la mesa, pero miramos, señor Penny, las ciudades de todo el país, y las cosas que han hecho para proteger y entender las preocupaciones del departamento de asociaciones, sobre asegurarnos de que tengamos personas que quieran participar en el programa de sección 8, y así no disminuyamos nuestra capacidad en el futuro para hacer eso. Así que apoyo su moción hoy, y estos proyectos en consecuencia de la ley local, pero creo que quiero ofrecer, obviamente, toda mi asistencia, mi relación y historia con el departamento de alquiler, para asegurar que podemos proteger la capacidad de tener alquiler que tomará vouchers de sección 8, y también usarlos como herramienta de aprovechamiento, y así sucesivamente. Todos sabemos que hay miles de personas en lista de espera por la sección 8 en la ciudad de Los Angeles, así que estoy de apoyo a la moción hoy, gracias.
Otros miembros deseando que se escuche, señor Reyes.
Solo quiero darles gracias, a Cecilia Stalano, de la fiscalía, por un gran trabajo, por su apoyo, sé que usted va a estar. Tengo un reporte de reporte de Claremont, si es que eso lo ayudarás, pero si pueden empezar con todo esto, gracias.
Otros miembros deseando que se escuche, sin ninguno, madame clara, por favor abre la rueda, en el item 58, por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Eso es aprobado. Miembros, como mencioné al principio de la reunión, todos los asuntos aprobados hoy van a ir adelante. Madame clara, siguiente item, por favor.
Siguiente, señor presidente, un especial, no en la agenda, fue presentado por concejal Rilly Thomas, segundo por concejal Gruel.
Madam fiscal, en los hallazgos.
Gracias, señor presidente, esto tiene que ver con la reubicación de asistencia de un alquiler ubicado en 1210 a 1214 West 39th Street, se citó anoche, es una familia con hijos que viven con familiares hasta que se pueda proporcionar la asistencia de reubicación, por lo tanto, el consejo debe hacer los hallazgos que se necesitan después de publicar la agenda, y que haya una necesidad inmediata de actuar.
Miembros en los hallazgos.
Abre los hallazgos.
Madame clara, por favor abre la rueda, por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Un especial ahora antes de nosotros, señor Rilly Thomas.
El concejal no comunica la moción, el departamento de viviendas ha inspeccionado las unidades ubicadas en 1210 hasta 1214 o esta calle 39, y ahora no que estas unidades sean desalojadas por el quebrantamiento de código de vivienda muy seriamente, y de tal naturaleza, que la salud y seguridad de los residentes está en peligro. El departamento de viviendas ha sido que hay un inquilino en este lugar que califica para asistencia de reubicación a nivel de 5 mil dólares, y de acuerdo a la redención que están mencionadas en la moción, pido adoptar esta moción para que el departamento de viviendas pueda hacer lo que se le requiere para facilitar la asistencia de reubicación de acuerdo con los reglamentos y leyes aplicables y adecuadas, por lo tanto, os pido.
Otros miembros deseando que se escuche, sin ninguno, madame clara, por favor abre la rueda, en el especial 1.
Abre ese voto.
Por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Eso es aprobado.
Será mandado, enviado al alcalde.
Siguiente, señor presidente, es hora de comentarios del público sobre temas no en agenda del consejo.
Tiempo para comentar, tiempo para comentar el público, y cuando la presentación del público, para hablar con el consejo, el plazo de comentario público.
Desean cerrar la mesa antes de entrar a sesión cerrada.
Vamos a hacer la guardería.
El consejo tiene motion para publicar y referir.
Motion debe publicarse y referir.
Hay una excusa en la mesa, el concejal Zine requiere ser excusado el día de octubre 2, de la ciudad, que necesita la política del consejo.
Se excusa.
Y la mesa está vacía para sesión cerrada.
En conformidad con la ley de California, el consejo ahora adjunta a sesión cerrada. Las guardias, por favor, cierre las puertas.
Bajo puertas cerradas, se levanta la sesión para empezar la reunión.
Bienvenidos a la sesión abierta, madame clara, item antes, por favor.
Item 57A, settlement en el caso de Albert Sanchez versus la ciudad de Los Angeles, y eso es en la cantidad de 745,000 dólares.
Por favor abre la rueda, por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Eso es aprobado, adelante, por favor.
Siguiente es el 57B, y ese settlement en el caso de Thomas McMaster versus la ciudad de Los Angeles, el caso de compensación de los trabajadores, y eso es en la cantidad de 125,000 dólares, pagable a 490 dólares por semana.
Por favor abre la rueda, por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Eso es aprobado, adelante.
Y eso clara la mesa, señor presidente.
Creo que estamos esperando otro motion especial de concejal Garcetti, o él espera que le digan el word del departamento, o no, lo estamos introduciendo hoy. Démosle un momento a señor Garcetti, ¿hay alguna anuncio?
Colegas, señor presidente, solo quiero anunciar que tenemos en nuestra página web en CD14, una votación de Chick Hearn, para todos los que quieran participar en el nombre real, algunas personas recomendaron Chick Hearn Court, el motion original decía Chick Hearn Lane, Miss Hahn sugirió Chick Hearn Dribble Drive, así que solo pedimos a los fans a votar y decirnos qué prefieren, y luego volveremos y informar al comité lo que está pasando con los fans.
Y la dirección web, señor Pacheco. Ok, así que todos los que estén en casa pueden votar en línea, señor Labonge.
Sí, solo quiero hacer una sugerencia, señor Pacheco, si usted quisiera, estamos construyendo 86 escuelas o así, la ciudad y por todo, entonces tal vez su comité podría sugerir que no solo la calle sea nombrada en honor de Chick Hearn, pero que haya una escuela secundaria o algo significativo que vaya a llevar su legado como alguien que impactó a toda Los Angeles, así que si su comité podía mirar eso apropiadamente, creo que sería importante.
Señor Garcetti, ¿tiene algún anuncio?
Tengo un motion, en rueda, lo introduciré especial 2.
¿Ha sido distribuido?
No ha sido, lo voy a introducir.
Introducirla, y lo haré después de anuncios.
Ok.
¿Otro anuncio?
Bueno, tengo un anuncio también.
Señor Garcetti.
El anuncio tiene que ver con lo que haré para el especial también, pero sé que muchos de ustedes han estado siguiendo la noticia de la desaparición de Jessica Cortez de Echo Park Lake el domingo por las 7:00 PM, estaba con el alcalde esta mañana en Echo Park, es por eso que estaba un poco tarde para el consejo, y he estado allí varias veces, así que todavía es indeterminado si esto es un accidente posible o ahora está cada vez avanzando hacia una posible absolución. Estamos pidiendo a los ciudadanos de la comunidad que si tienen información, por favor contacten la estación de policía Rampart, tengo el número 213-485-4061, hemos tenido más de 230 oficiales de LAPD trabajando en esto, la mayor equipo de dive que ha reunido más de 30 oficiales de múltiples agencias, y han descubrimos la playa y están tomando el equipo de sheriff esta tarde para hacer un cheque de sonar en la playa, pero tenemos un indicio y queremos animar a los ciudadanos a llamar, y también shortly voy a introducir un motion especial.
Gracias, señor Garcetti, esperaremos la distribución de ese motion, ¿otro anuncio? Miembros, si no hay otro anuncio, permítanme pedirte que te unan a mí en congratular y bienvenida al nuevo oficial reservado al Departamento de Policía de Los Ángeles, no menos que nuestro colega, concejal Dennis Zine, muy orgulloso de su bandera. ¿Un par de palabras?
Él está de vuelta, dije a esos tipos de mierda que él está de vuelta, no, lo aprecio, tuvimos una ceremonia con el jefe Palmer esta mañana, y el joven Christopher Zine, mi hijo de policía, su hijo estaba allí con mi otro hijo Eric, y algunos miembros de la Liga Protección, así que es un día maravilloso, he trabajado duro para volver como reservado, la historia de la ciudad se está haciendo, el primer concejal a ser miembro de la Reserva LAPD, lo que me ayudará con mis colegas, Sidney Misakowski, en la seguridad pública, así que yo tendré la bandera y estaré en las calles durante dos días, un mes, en uniforme, patrullando en algún lugar en nuestra ciudad maravillosa. Y Shaquille O'Neal es un oficial reservado con el puerto, Dennis Zine es un oficial reservado con el LAPD, así que animamos a otras personas a unirse a las reservas, LAPD, lo mejor del mundo.
Y el 1 de julio, el 3, habrá dos más miembros de la policía o reserva en el board, en el consejo, usted no será el más viejo oficial reservado.
No quiero ser el más viejo.
Ciudadanos de Los Angeles, atentos.
Gracias.
Señor Pacheco.
Atentos.
Solo iba a invitar a Dennis a la 2700ª plaza de la calle Oregon en Bar Heights para uno de tus primeros días, y solo vamos a ir y volviendo, y solo nos das un patrullero, sí, ¿vale?
Señor Rilly Thomas.
Señor presidente, les aseguro que es hora de hacer motion adjuntas.
Bueno, antes de hacer motion adjuntas, tenemos un especial traído por señor Garcetti, madame fiscal, en los hallazgos.
Esto tiene que ver con la desaparición de la mujer joven, es un motion de recompensa de 25,000 dólares, el Departamento de Policía ha pedido por ello, basado en la necesidad de sacar al público, así que.
Miembros en los hallazgos, sin ninguno, madame clara, por favor abre la rueda, por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Especial 2 ahora antes de nosotros, señor Garcetti, en el motion.
Solo para dejar de recordar, lo que estaré diciendo es que el domingo 11 de agosto de 2002, aproximadamente a 7:00 PM, Jessica Cortez desapareció de Echo Park Lake, voy a por la adopción de este motion, el consejo de la ciudad proveerá de recompensa por la información que lleve a la identificación, aprehensión y convicción de cualquiera responsable de su desaparición, y que la suma de 25,000 dólares será la suma máxima de pago o pagos de la ciudad en este instante, y que tengamos hallazgos en la división 19, capitulo 12, artículo 1 del Código Administrativo de LA.
Gracias, señor Garcetti, el lenguaje de motion de recompensa está estándar, madame clara, por favor abre la rueda, por favor cierra la rueda y tabula el voto.
14 oyes.
Eso es aprobado, adelante, por favor. Y ahora, sin más anuncios, motion adjuntas. Señor Holden.
Miembro del presidente, quería anunciar que es Pauline Veronica Banks, ella es la madre de mi longtime concejal, el diputado Armin Ross, esta Bank nació y crió en Washington DC, era la quinta de nueve hijos, en sus primeros años trabajó como trabajadora doméstica en el hogar de James Simmington, quien era el jefe de protocolo para el presidente Lyndon B. Johnson, así comenzó su larga interés, larga interacción con la política y los eventos actuales, su familia finalmente se refería a ella como el historiador residente, le gustaba pasar el tiempo archivando eventos notables y contando historias de su pasado, también disfrutaba de la vida de la política, debates con familias y amigos, en 1979 se mudó a California, su hogar permanente, tenía 87 años a la hora de su muerte, sobrevivió a dos hijas y un hijo, numerosas granderos y grandes granderos, y el servicio de funeral está pendiente. Miembros del presidente, estoy seguro de que el señor Labonge y otros se unirán con mí y pasando, un miembro de memoria de John C. Argu, este Argu es una pérdida importante de la ciudad de Los Angeles, fue un activista cívico que jugó un papel clave en el éxito de una gran variedad de negocios, comunidades, actividades educativas y filantropicas, también fue muy importante en la llegada de las Olimpiadas de 1984 a Los Angeles, este tipo trabajó día y noche en ese evento, perdió una batalla de ocho meses con leucemia, tenía 70 años a la hora de su muerte, en los últimos años, este Argu ha sido presidente del Consejo de Trasas de la USC, el fundador de la Fundación Rose Hill, que contribuye a causar causas dignas en el Valle de San Gabriel, y de la Fundación Amateurs, que fue creado para regalar dinero sobrepuesto del Olimpiador de 1984 a un programa de deporte juvenil en el sur de California, y el Olimpiador fue muy exitoso, ganaron millones de dólares extra, y todavía están dando el dinero a buenos programas, sobrevivió a su esposa de 39 años, Liz, dos hijos, Betsy, Poland, y John Argu, cuatro granderos.
Todos los miembros. Todos los miembros.
Solo quería añadir a John Argu, muy cerca de John Ferraro y sus esfuerzos en los años 70 para asegurar los juegos olímpicos para Los Angeles en 1978, esto fue dos años después de Montreal, y los desafíos que los canadienses tuvieron en sacar su evento, y fueron momentos muy difíciles, difíciles, y sé que creo que Marvin Browdy tomó la decisión de llevar los Olimpiadas de 1984 a Los Angeles, lo que fue tan especial para todas las personas allí, pero John Argu fue uno de, fue una excepción, he conocido a muchas personas, como todos nosotros, que estaban involucradas en la comunidad, pero realmente tuvo su visión de lo que creía en los Olimpiadas, y ciertamente su amor por la Universidad de California, pero el movimiento olímpico y tratando de volver a los juegos en 2012, y fue absolutamente lo que realmente se llama persona de las escenas , quien solo lo hacía, su trabajo durante los Olimpiadas en 84, donde muchas personas tenían grandes trabajos, él fue el alberto y el bienvenido en el Coliseum, lo que él amaba hacer y conocer a todas las personas allí, y asegurarse de que todo iba bien, y también fue el que recomendó a Peter Uberoff, que era una persona desconocida en ese momento a nuestra comunidad, y el gran trabajo que hicieron, y el legado que esos juegos construyeron, John C. Argu es realmente uno de los grandes Angelenos, y estará desaparecido por su familia y por la Universidad de California, el movimiento olímpico, y también quiero decir, el Consejo de Visitas Internacional, el año pasado nominó a John C. Argu como el ciudadano del año, y aceptó eso en enero. They're having the dinner in October. It will be presented posthumously to him and his family, but John C. Argu is one of those giants of a person who really contributed greatly to the benefit of all of Southern California and the Olympic movement in the world.
Thanks, Mr. Labonges. Ms. Miskowski.
I would just like to echo that on Mr. Argu. He, and commend people to read yesterday's tribute in the Los Angeles Times, interestingly written by Ken Rich. And for those who remember the battle in the late '70s and the Olympics were coming here, Ken Rich was perhaps the nemesis of the Olympics in terms of questioning, pushing both Mayor Bradley and John Argu time and again on certainties and guarantees in terms of the economic success. And that he can write this tribute today, entitled "LA Owe a Debt to Him," talking about the great sports figure we lost last week, the great treasure in Los Angeles, Chick Hearn, but saying right up there with Chick Hearn was John Argu in terms of what he did for this city, what he did for sports, what he did for collegiality, what he did, just what he did, period. His colleagues called him the doer, the go-to person when you needed something done, and you'd no sooner have a meeting talking about something than at the next week's meeting. He would be three and four and five steps ahead already having accomplished things. He was a gentleman throughout, became a very, very close friend of the mayor as well as others because of his commitment to Los Angeles, to this effort. And I think, I know we lowered the flag at half-staff last week for Chick Hearn, and I would say that today, John Argu is another person who deserves that tribute, and clearly the tribute of all Angelenos, so I'm pleased that all members of the council will sign on this.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I had the good fortune to know Mr. Argu for quite a while, and he always took time to speak to all kinds of people, no matter how big or small, and I appreciated that about him. And while he appeared to be gruff, he was extremely kind-hearted and funny, had a great sense of humor. And I read in the paper yesterday a comment about his handwriting, and I can tell you that when he was in the hospital, I had been told he was in isolation, and I wanted to send him a note to cheer him up, so I sent it over to Connie, his longtime assistant, whose desk was always piled two feet with his papers. And he sent me a note back, and of course, it was indecipherable, and I've never seen handwriting that bad, but Connie made a translation for me, and I'm really happy to have that, and it'll be a very meaningful way to remember him. I can look at that and always have a little chuckle and remember him.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, it's been suggested the value that John Argu has had for the city of Los Angeles, the region. USC is in his debt, the Sports Council, Rose Hills Foundation, the Exposition Park and a Generational Community Complex benefited from his leadership on the board. The list goes on and on. Clearly, in the 1984 Olympics, he played a pivotal role. Should be known that he did heavy lifting to return the Olympics to our great city. The 2012 Games, he was active in the bid for that effort. And so when we think of John, we are not at all vulnerable or in position to be contradicted when we identify him as a civic treasure. John Argu will be sorely missed.
Other tributes? Ms. Hahn.
I just wanted to add my bit here too, and just to say that one of the other things I appreciated reading in the tribute was how he wanted to make sure that the money from the Amateur Athletic Foundation went to putting bats and balls in the hands of kids, and wasn't ever interested in seeing that fun grow and just sit there, but wanted to make sure that it got to the young people of this city. And I think it would be a fitting tribute, and I've suggested to the mayor, but maybe those of you on the Coliseum Commission could follow up on this, that I think a more fitting tribute would be to light our Olympic torch at the Coliseum in honor of John C. Argu.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.